All right, welcome everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 21st. It's 6:00 PM. I call this meeting of the North Brookfield Board of Selectment to Order. You'll all join me in the slumming flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing we have is the approval of the minutes of 3:8:22. I want to take a motion to approve those. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. I want to take a motion to approve school warrant number 1064 for $76,105.41. General warrant number 1065 for $209,943.68. Payroll warrant number 26 for $567,204.39. Payroll warrant number 26A for $2,522. Second. All in favor? Aye. All right. We have some transfers.
I was talking to him about last minute and then I have a whole stack.
Whole stack of them, huh?
Yes.
All right. So the first one is for $261.76 to be transferred from the police department, police overtime account, to the police salary account. The account needed that much additional funding. And then the second one is for $3,450.49. And that's from the police overtime account to the police career incentive account. And that account needs additional funding as well.
Is it interdepartmental transfers or?
Yeah.
Within the same department?
Yep.
Okay, so it's all police to police.
Police to police. Okay. Any accountant signed off on it?
Yeah.
I want to take a motion to approve those two transfers.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. So the next four are also interdepartmental. This one here, the amount requested is $1,000 from the water department from the building and equipment maintenance account to the other salary. Reason being is the budget was depleted due to water main breaks requiring large amounts of detailed coverage. I want to take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
No. It's inside right now.
All in favor? Aye. The next one's for $552 from the playground department. It's from the salary account to the supplies account. The reason is there's no salary required this year and they need it for supplies. I want to take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. The next one. $762.75 from the fire department, fire supplies account to the fire department, fire other expenses account to cover boat repairs. I want to take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Now, second. All in favor? Aye. Where did you sign up? Yeah, that was, that was, that's a little big. I want to take a motion to keep it size. So this one here is for $671. Sixty cents or zeros?
I would say it's zeros.
$671 from the library salary account to the library purchases services account to cover anticipated incoming invoices and help cover the shortfall from mid-year budget cuts. I want to take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Now, second. All in favor? Aye. The next two are reserve fund requests. This first one is $538.16 to be transferred to playground supplies for additional costs for ball field material. I want to take a motion to approve that. Now, second. All in favor? Aye. And the next one is a reserve fund request for $2,594 to be transferred to the library purchases services. Current balance in that appropriation is $62.95. The amount requested will be used for two electric bills, two gas, two constellations, two CBS, one Bennett bill and estimated cost $3,265. Expenditure is extraordinary and unforeseen for the following reasons, the mid-year budget cut. All right. I want to take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Now, second. All in favor? Aye. That's it? So the next thing is to sign the audit letter from Scanlon Associates. They do our town management audit letter every year. They come in and they spend time with the accountant and the treasurer. They audit all our business and how we do business in town. And we just have to sign the letter from them. All right. I want to take a motion to sign that.
So moved.
Now, second. All in favor? Aye. All right. We have to vote on an ARPA expenditure. That's what that is, right? All right.
Long view?
I don't think there's anything in here about that, is there?
No.
So we got a recommendation from the ARPA committee to spend ARPA money to reimburse the Arnold's for their water issues. There were questions as to whether or not it was stormwater related, meaning it's infrastructure from storm drains. There's also been potentially like an onsite private well or something that was causing the issue as well. And it's still undetermined which one of those things it was. There's no, there's no real solid proof either way. We've also gotten a letter back from town council saying that they don't advise us paying that out of ARPA money because it would be inappropriate use of ARPA funds. So, that being said, do you want to make a motion to vote for or against that?
Well, this is the second time that town council has told us not to pay that bill. So I would make a motion not to pay the bill with ARPA funds because of town council there.
Right. We just got that today. So if there was proof that it was not the well, there was, you know, that was town infrastructure that was doing it, then that would be, that would probably be different. But I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right. New business. Is that what you're here for?
Yes.
All right. So contract amendment, fire station architect. Do you want to hit that?
Yes. Yeah, tech owner's under their scope on the original contract with the new fires. They still kept them within the scope of practice to help us with the renovations. And this contract is an amendment to allow them to go forth, give us the conceptual designs and estimates for the fire station. And as agreed, they would also review the estimates that we're getting for the two other buildings, Hucks and the old highway. They'll review those and make commentary on any of those proposals that come in as part of this amendment to help us out and determine, make sure we have the right figures to go to the town. So they offered to do it for like $10,000 for the additional. I have $9,000 and some change that I carry over and encumber in two or three years with the other project. And I've got enough gift account money to cover the remainder of the balance. There'll be no cost to out of the town coffers at this point. And that money was all allocated and we actually at town meeting shifted the money for the use of the architect because originally the $9,000 was used for the project manager, the owner manager. So that was changed at the last town meeting. So that's, that's what this amendment is for. And the two of you gentlemen will have to sign it at the bottom. And as soon as you do, I can send him a text and he can get to work. They already came out and laser shot the building over here at the fire station to see if our original plans that John and myself and a few others penciled together and reviewed with you guys with the offices, the lobby, the sleeping quarters. And they're, they're getting that fitted into the laser shot. And, but he can't go forward with actually really going forward now to get moving on the conceptual design. So if you sign this, they can get going forward with that. We'll have seven weeks. They got seven weeks to get a proposal together, which hopefully, you know, Jason and I can get our rest of our estimates on the other two buildings together within the seven weeks. And we'll be able to come in and meet with you folks and have a proposal and review the proposal and look at the different things that we might cut or take or whatever from the design that he's going to do. Now, his final design and drawings will be added to the debt exclusion mode for the actual design plans. That'll be added on later. So at this point in time, this is our, the $10,000 is covered, put it that way, without asking for any more money. So we were lucky to have him on board still and it fell within scope. We didn't have to go to bid for an architect or anything to save us a lot of money. Then they did the police station and they helped us with the new station. So I think we'll have good luck with it.
That's right.
So that's all this is. If you guys sign it, then they can give him the heads up to move forward. It is pretty simple. It's, that's what the services will, will do for us.
So you talked about the conceptual design. This is the first draft?
Yeah, conceptual design is they'll fit what we did into the laser shot. They'll work with that to see how that all comes together, the suggestion. And the conceptual design will be showing the three dimensional looks at how things are, the building, the front yard, the whole thing. And then once we, and it'll get us the estimates because the estimates go to a professional estimator. Yeah, that'll be, that's what this package really does for us. It gets us the estimate to redo that building.
That's what I was kind of driving.
Yes.
They are going to get numbers from.
Yeah, that's what this is all about, correct. And then when we get those numbers, of course, they, they're going to include every little thing, you know, from new furniture to whatever. And then we can pick that apart, get the cost of what we think is, it really should be and what we can get away with or not get away with, like landscaping that we could do or, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
And narrow down that cost. Yeah, so that, this whole package would cover giving us a figure to go to the town. And they'll also review the figures we're getting from local contractors and things for the other two buildings to see if, you know, because they're in the business every day. They know what might hit and might not. So they'll review those for us and make commentary on the figure. Say a guy gives a roof figure, they might come back and say, eh, you know, you better, that's really, it could be 2,000 more or it could be 2,000 less, you know? So they'll come back with that kind of commentary for us as part of this package.
Will that include heating and air conditioning?
Everything. This estimate will include.
Done deal.
Oh, yeah. This package, this is the number to go to the town with, correct?
Yeah, okay.
You know, and they'll, they'll, they'll have, you know, the room, the, what do you call it? Contingent figure in there and everything.
Yeah.
And then we go to the town with a figure, it gets voted on. But they're going to add at that point in time, when it goes to debt exclusion, they'll add their cost to the detailed drawings.
Yeah.
The blueprints to actually do the work and go out to bid and get it done.
The spec, specification.
Right, yeah.
Drawings.
Yeah. So the conceptual includes the estimates. The general always sure of it all, seeing if what we want fits in there. Maybe they turn something or they do something to make it fit better. That's what this is all about, yeah.
Any idea on what the other stuff would cost? Above and beyond after the conceptual when they do the?
Detailed drawings?
Yeah.
No, I, I did ask him that. I forget what we were, we're talking. I don't want to speak out there because I.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I really don't know, Johnny.
Yeah.
It's hard for him to say. I mean, here too, we're, he's not designing a whole new building. I mean, for the most part, the structure is there.
It's a renovation.
So that should bring it down some.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a renovation and the heat and electrical upgrades and whatever, plumbing upgrades and stuff like that. So I'm just hoping it would be, it did, I did ask him and he gave me a. I, I wasn't shocked by the figure. I just don't remember what it was. I don't want to speak out and turn on it.
And it doesn't include the second floor because you're not?
Yeah, it'll include the kitchen, the urethane, the floors, all that stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. If we need any insulation up there. It's a whole building.
Okay.
It's a whole building, yeah. And then again, we can, we can take what we can out of it, you know, when time goes.
Yeah.
And he'll bring it all up to cover. Everything that he does, make it fit into the fire service, NPA. The building's going to last two weeks, yes. Don't be much required. But that's just that building. And then the other two buildings were renovating.
We don't need architects for.
No. And what needs to go to bid and stuff, he'll give us, he'll give us any ideas of what we need to be. The numbers we give him, he'll look at them and say, that's not realistic or that's realistic. You know what I mean? He'll make commentary on that as part of this deal. So.
You good? All right. I want to take a motion to sign the contract amendment.
Same with tech.
Now, second. Any more discussion?
I think we kind of covered it. That's why I asked because I don't see what that is.
Yeah, it's easy. It's all about getting the estimates to go to the town with, correct? Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have an appointment. The director of the senior center. Is that for John? So we have a letter here from the council on aging.
I'll talk to you.
The North Brookfield Council on Aging at a meeting of June 13th, 2022. Unanimously voted to recommend the appointment of Donna Segwin as director of North Brookfield Senior Center beginning July 5th, 2022. Thank you respectfully, Judith Manning, COA Chair. And Donna is here. Looking forward to starting again. Excellent. John, you got any questions?
No, I sent in on the meeting that the council on aging had with her. And I'm pleased that they've given her a chance to come back and I think she'll do well. It's a new day over there. Atmospheres and stuff and everything. And Michelle has offered to help you to get going with your computer stuff.
You still got my numbers and everything, right?
Pardon?
You still got my phone number?
Me too.
You guys can work that out.
Work it out.
So that you're, you're not coming in cold, you know? She'll help you out with whatever. And, and these nice women will help you also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I want to take a motion to appoint Donna Segwin as the director of the North Brookfield Senior Center beginning July 5th, 2022. Now, second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Welcome aboard.
These are both just extending the deadlines for the FY20, FY19, CPG to the end of this year. Just to, uh. December 31st for each of these steps.
Are we still doing post renovations? Is that?
One of them, the FY19, yes. There's some house renovations. The FY20, I believe they're extending because that's part of the senior center project. So they're just, they're amending it and they're just pushing the deadline to the end of December.
Okay.
And hopefully there will be no more pushing after that, it'll be done.
It'll be done.
So all this is, is we're signing extensions for grants that are already in action to the end of December. So I want to take a motion to sign these extensions.
So moved.
Now, second. All in favor? Aye. That's just, just me here, right? The next thing is sustainable materials recovery program contract.
How's where recycling, we do it here. This is so that, this is actually, basically we're applying for the grant. And that way if we're awarded, everything's already signed. But we've applied and done it for the past couple of years in the round, so.
Okay. I want to take a motion to sign the SMRP contract. Now, second. Any discussion?
No. If it's something we've done and we're still in the process of.
It's for recycling.
Yeah.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
This was left on Fox last week, the CMRC state contract. I don't know if you want to table it till next week.
Yeah, let's table that. Just to look at it and so.
You have a copy of it later.
All right. Excellent. Well, that's all of our regular business. Public comment period?
Can we have more than one comment?
Well, depends how long.
I came in with one, but I had a couple of questions on stuff that transpired. But I'll ask, I'll do the one that I came in for. I am questioning, sectioning off this right next door. I thought.
Yeah, but you're pointing at Michelle, so that's kind of weird.
My son should be.
Sorry. So go ahead.
I'm sorry. Oh, that's funny. I thought they were going to show, be showing movies. I thought that's why all this, this was going on out here. I thought it was going to be moving that or something.
Well, it can be in the pa, in the future if they want.
But I, the chief, the chief of police, he came into the senior center at lunchtime.
He did?
He did, surprise, John! And, and we had, he came at our table and we had a nice, nice long chat with him, various things. And so I asked him, well, they're going to be showing a movie up there. And he said, that's for the new helio, am I saying that right? Helio port? Is that how you say it?
Well, where they're going to land the helicopter.
It's a landing zone. It's not a hill port or anything like that.
What's the difference between a landing zone and a heli?
Landing zone is a spot that they can land if they have to.
In an emergency, but is not designated, like does not have to be upkept. They, they periodically search areas to find appropriate landing zones. Like I think it's once a year, every other year.
It's there.
So it changes a lot depending on the landscape of a town, but yeah.
Part of the problem we've had is that, so in spring, summer, fall, it's not a huge deal to find a place to land a helicopter in the event of lifeflight, right? In the wintertime, it's difficult because the field that you normally would land in, it's got snow or ice or what have you in it. So we're going to have a portion of that over there designated to, as a, as a landing zone that we can keep clear or clear out quick enough so the helicopter can land there and, and safely extract someone who might need to be flown to hospital.
What have we done in the past?
School.
And so that's not.
Or the playground.
I, I just say the playground is good for spring, summer and fall.
Yeah.
Not, not in the winter with the snow, but the school is.
If there's cars, if the kids are there and there's cars, you can't use the driveways and you can't plow the ball fields in the wintertime. And that's when the kids.
Who maintains this?
It's town property. So Jason will plow it. Highway guys to maintain it. And it'll be mowed, you know?
Who mowed?
I mowed it the other day. Of course you did. Well, I, I had some free time.
So going forward, is that going to be your responsibility?
No. Highway has a big side mower. That's been mowed four times to get it to look like this. Uh, no, uh, highway has a big side mower, and that's been mowed four times to get it to look like this.
You know, I'm sounding like a real pain in the butt, and I don't know.
Sure.
But the town, we know the town is, does not have an overabundance of money. And so that's my thought about it.
This isn't going to cost that much.
Yeah, okay.
Just making a few passes with a plow truck in the wintertime if there's snow.
And mowing it in the summer.
I did it for nothing. Last Sunday.
And it'll save lives.
Saving lives, yeah.
Okay.
Lifeflight, it's not just for.
I get that, I know.
It's not for, it's not for just random people that.
Random helicopters.
I know, but I know a lifeline, it's, it would be my, it's not in two digits, I understand.
You can't land yours there.
It, it's a good use for that, it, it's, it's right in the center. Fire Department's over here with the E M S people, they don't have fire to travel. All the goodies are right in the center of town here, and it'll take, I have no time at all for them to go three times up, uh, to, to plow the thing. In the wintertime.
And I, I've been around long enough to know that you become very unpopular if you question anything having to do with the fire department. And that's a fact, because I know. And so, um, just my asking about this, um, I get it, people don't, listen, this is the fire department, and we need this, and you, 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 and.
The fire department came to somebody else.
We have no money.
The fire department came to us first, and we tried to find spots. I offered the rail trail down behind, uh, Tassy Fuel, the Ohio Lumber, but there's high tension lines over there.
Okay, so I mean, it's not even the, the spot, that's the, I mean.
No, I'm just saying, you know, we needed, we needed to locate a, a safe spot for them to land.
That way they don't have to search in the event that they need to land somewhere.
Yeah, and, and the fire department didn't say we need that, we offered that as a space. Because it, you can't build on it because of the asbestos, can't dig, so this is a perfect use for it. Mowing the grass and plowing it, does not disturb the, the cap, that's all.
Cannot be used for anything else.
Movie night.
They can't, they can't.
Why not? Why not? It's, it's.
Anything that we use on there will be able to be moved quickly, yeah.
Right, and also, if you're doing movie night, those are typically spring, summer.
Yep.
Right, so the school, I mean, movie night is not one at the same time that the school would be active.
It's.
So the school would be the appropriate landing zone while, while movie night is going on.
Or everybody can scatter.
Right, scatter.
And so, you know, at, at the Senior Center, when you get, get a bunch of elderly women sitting at, at a table having a discussion, lots of stuff gets brought up.
I don't believe it.
I know, it's, I know, it's not, I mean, this has been discussed before tonight, just.
Well, it's good questions, because other people don't know what's going on.
You think there's a lot of questions, then you should have John over for dinner.
Yeah.
We've had it there. Okay, my son, okay, that's what I came for, but I wanted to know.
More than two minutes.
Why, no, no, we have two minutes on the.
We tried to, we tried to keep it down to two minutes.
Why is there no salary at the playground?
Apparently, they didn't need it this year, they're an elected committee.
I, I understand, but so, I, I just.
They didn't draw a salary.
You said this year, this, okay.
They didn't draw a salary, so they're using it for supplies.
They're, they, they need a back or something like that?
They're a fairly new committee, and we.
No, well, really, I was on the playground committee a hundred years ago.
They're all, they're all elected, so, you know, that's kind of a question for them.
No, I, I, they're giving it back, and, and they're doing it, the playground's great.
It is.
Uh, it's, it's wonderful to have interest in the playground and it being utilized, I understand Chet's organizing something, you're organizing a ball game?
I'm not.
No, I'm not, don't get me wrong. And then I have one last thing about the ARPA funds.
Okay.
Oh, again, that's such a controversial thing, is, is the, the ARPA funds.
So what's the question?
Um, um, it's been, it's been, it's been said that, you know, the townspeople voted this twice, and I'm not putting you in a spot because I'm, I didn't work. But you know the job, Jason, people saying, the people voted this twice, how come, like.
Because it's illegal for us to pay for it.
I, I know.
So.
I know.
Okay, so what's the question?
That's the, it's illegal twice for us to pay for that.
But the ARPA committee, I don't know.
That's different money, our, the ARPA, ARPA money is something that is outside of our town budget.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, so if, if that issue was directly related to stormwater infrastructure. It's something that we possibly could have paid for out of the ARPA money.
Okay, I understand now, it's not indefinite, is that what you're saying?
Right.
It's not indefinite, we don't really know for sure, is that what, is that what it is? Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, who's next? Uh, we'll come back to you, go ahead, Chet.
Hey, I just want to, we're going to have a fun day for July, are we not?
We are trying desperately to do that, yes.
Good, good, I got, I, I have two softball teams that are, are aching to, to get onto this not yet memorial John Tripp softball field.
Well, hopefully it doesn't get named that for a long time.
Maybe it's something we don't.
The fun day means you're gone. Have you played something that John should know about, or?
Okay, at 1:00 on the fourth, we're going to play, the firemen are going to have one team, and the other team will consist of the 1940s girls, uh, baseball team. They're going to look like that, okay, so that's going to be the basic teams. I haven't told the fire department yet that they have to. Get with backpacks and fire hoses, kind of even things up.
Oh.
So, anyway. Don't put your.
And that's.
Leave the field open is what I'm.
Do they know that they're playing? Have you talked to them?
Oh, yeah, I've been, I've been.
And that's at what time?
I just been told that they have to, probably have to wait.
What time?
1:00 on the fourth.
1:00, okay.
1:00.
We're playing, we're plodding around. We're playing around.
On the baseball field, not the common. With the, the John Tripp, uh, organization.
Oh, that's cool.
I've been working on that.
Not the school, the playground.
Shut down, that's called a playground.
That's, that's all there to come.
And Sheila Orsi will probably sing the National Anthem to start the game, and I'm working on, uh, I'm working on Neil Diamond for the 70th inning.
Well, well, he retired.
Well, he's a impersonator in.
You're serious?
So we've got bats and balls, and it's going to be a softball.
Andy Conrers says he has everything we need.
Okay.
So balls, bats, gloves.
We have a fire.
We, 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 we need some buns.
I'm going to be cooking hot dogs.
Okay, well, you can, you can call the office right from the front of the dog's stand.
So you, you, you stay at the, at the same venue with Sid?
Yes.
Oh, what a great thing.
Yep.
That's great.
It'll be at 11:00. It'll be different than last year.
Have a parade, too?
Yes, we are.
Yay!
Wonderful.
Fire trucks.
All right.
The chief, the Chief of Police, when he, I kid you, when he was, when he was there at the Senior Center, and he talked about dieting. And I mentioned something about walking, you know, we just can't walk, and I said, you know, I'd like to get a group of people with canes to be able to walk, you know, to walk. And he said, you get, you get them, he said, I'll make up T-shirts, I'll have T-shirts made up that said, the cane gang. We are members of the cane gang.
There you go.
Not the change gang.
Will you hold them to that?
There you go.
You can march in the parade if you want.
All right, Judy, you got something?
I was just wondering if you're ready to post that position, now.
They have to review the, you guys have to approve their job description, so you can do that next week? It's in the last week's folder, if you guys want to review it, and you can both.
Because nobody's going to apply until it's posted.
Right.
All right, we'll review it now, next Tuesday, and then.
Unless she wants to, unless she wants to come in for the interim.
If, if, if the same person wants to come in for the interim position, she can come in next Tuesday and talk to us.
Okay, so who's going to call her and ask her?
I'll call her.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just be downtown, I won't be here, because we'll just make a special fire meeting so we can review it.
All right. Brandon?
I'm good.
Thanks. All right. Go ahead. 30 seconds, Kathy took all your time.
Fourth of July, uh, party on the Common, uh, Jason and I are trying to put this thing together, a little rank tag, we've got the firemen going to, going to bring a few trucks. I'm trying to get some older cars from the car show, I talked to, uh, some people. Uh, we have a couple of side by sides that were here last year, and we're trying to get, uh, Joe Jabon, he told me he's going to try to get some guys to march as a color guard. And to lower and raise the flag, and maybe he was trying to get a new flag, I don't know if he's going to be able to. So when we take the old down, the wood can go off. Uh, and if Chet thinks that Sheila Orsi can come and sing, uh, that would be great.
Says she would, yeah.
Jason is trying to get, we have a bounce house, somebody donated a bounce house, uh, sign a cost us anything.
We do have a band from six to eight.
A band from six to eight.
What kind of music?
Great surprise.
So if anybody wants to get bands.
Certainly a few different things, yeah.
Oh, real band?
Yeah, real band.
A real band, not the, what do we use?
A DJ.
A DJ.
Well, if, if somebody knows a DJ that can donate, uh, from, what do we need, from noon to two and two to four, is that what we have?
Andy Care, there you go.
Well, we don't want to, we don't want to interrupt the game either, so we're going to, we're going to think about this, so we'll, we'll work on it.
All right, what, how long is the game going to be?
Well, it's a good question, uh, each inning will, will not score more than five runs, so it's going to, I'm going to keep it open.
Okay.
A five run rule each inning.
Okay.
Florine said she wanted to join, as representing the senior.
She wants to be a pitcher or pitcher? So I'm, I'm going to, I've asked, I've asked Antifits to donate hot dogs and buns and the fixings, they're supposed to get back to me, uh, early this week. I've asked all the general to donate the paper goods, and Dr. John up there, he said he's going to help us out with that stuff. We were supposed to be getting some maybe table talk apple pies, the little ones, somebody that I know knows somebody there. Hopefully that's donated, we don't have to shell out for, and also the soda or tonic, whatever you call it. Should be donated by somebody if it works out, so.
Is there any way you're making money, are they paying for anything? Is there anybody paying, or we paying for a hot dog, or is that what you mean?
It was free last year, we're going to try to do the same thing. We cooked, we cooked 400 hot dogs last year.
That's very, very nice.
And, and everything went.
Oh, the other, the other thing that we might have, not sure yet, because there's a lot of, uh, dates that are variable for. Is the, um, the radio control car guy.
Oh, the R C guy, yeah.
Uh, might put on a stunt show.
Okay.
At some point during that, that day, so, because he usually shows up anyway.
I know, yeah.
And gets yelled at for, for jumping the thing, so we'll designate an area for him to do that. So nobody has to be scared about getting whacked by an R C car.
Those things fly.
But, but no, he's really good, and, uh, I guess he had a, he had a race on, at the Common, on, on Memorial Day. It wasn't very well attended, but he did have a race and, and, uh.
I didn't know about it, we were downtown, so.
Yeah, we were downtown, so, all right, um, anything else?
So spread the word, party on the.
What time does the parade start?
11:00.
11:00, and where is it going from?
From, uh, over here.
Okay.
Up north, Main Street, Main Street, north Main, around Andy Brown's.
Okay.
And that was, and that was the common, yeah, most of us can't go much further, so.
We end, we end pretty much by going right into the Common, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was nine or 11:00 or 12:00.
11:00, and then we're going to walk around, I'll start getting the hot dogs and whatever. So if anybody wants to help set up or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, before the parade, uh, we're going to be stopped.
Hook stop at Harts and.
Did you get ahold of them to set something up?
I haven't heard back yet, I'm going to try again tomorrow, Harts, Common Ground, um, the Orchard, and, um, Tara was in talks with, um, Bobby at Stotts. To see if he wanted to come down and do something, but nothing has been totally firmed up yet, so.
Yeah, we put it together in five days last year, this, this time we've had two weeks, so.
Unfortunately, at, as it stands right now, we are not going to be able to have the laser light show. So. We just don't have the money to buy it.
That was expensive.
Yeah, we did, we paid for that last year, so.
Well, that was paid for before.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, right, right, right.
They have the COVID.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Tabac funds paper?
Your, your time is up.
We've had a lot of minutes, that's more than I have.
All right, um, so we do have one announcement. Um, Lake Lashway is going to start their annual treatment on June 30th. So that means. First treatment is scheduled for the morning of Thursday, June 30th, potential follow inspections, frequently in the summer.
How long do you have to stay on the water?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking on that.
It doesn't say.
It's like 24 hours.
Yeah, it's not long.
Yeah, they, yeah, they come before the Conservation Commission on that.
And they did say they're going to let all the butters know, so, so weed control and, and, uh, LG.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there being no further business, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Thank you.
See you.